Ready, Michael?
Action.
Action, rolling. Okay, evening, everyone. Uh, let's see, we got a number of things here tonight. Uh, some resolutions. Uh, one is considered resolution seventeen dash two thousand and eighteen, authorizing budget adjustments. We do this periodically, moving stuff around, um, in the budget to pay for other services. Uh, any questions or anything from anyone on this? I'm doing pretty, uh...
Yeah, straightforward.
Straightforward. So I'll make a motion to authorize the budget adjustments, uh, seventeen dash two thousand and eighteen.
Second?
Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Valotto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
And I vote yes. I'm going down. Uh, next resolution, eighteen dash two thousand and eighteen, increasing sewer flat rate, uh, rent. Uh, I will read the, uh, resolution. So I have a vote. I guess do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution eighteen two zero one eight, increasing the sewer flat rate rent.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I will read this and we'll go to the roll call. Um, so we'll go to the end and then if there's any discussion, then go to the roll call. Or is there any discussion before we go to the roll call? Okay, we've, um, for those not in the know, um, we were raising the sewer flat rate at ten dollars. Uh, we had had public hearing and discussion over a number of meetings, um, so this is to finalize that or enact that. Whereas upgrades to the Village of Coal Spring wastewater system necessitated the village to seek financing from Environmental Facilities Corporation. And whereas an increase to the sewer flat rate rent is recommended to cover the costs of the upgrades. And whereas the Village of Coal Spring Board of Trustees met at the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the sewer flat rent, flat rate rent increase of ten dollars per unit per quarter and heard well person desiring to be heard thereon. And now therefore be resolved that the sewer quarterly flat rate unit fee is hereby increased by the amount of ten dollars per unit, uh, quarter, um, from seventy-eight thirty per unit to eighty-eight thirty per unit per quarter effective, uh, July first, two thousand and eighteen. Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Valotto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. Okay, uh, next, consider resolution nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, approving MOA with Coal Spring Police Benevolent Association. Um, we had passed it at one of our last meetings. We had the date wrong. We've corrected that, so we're doing it again. So do I have a motion?
So move?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Whereas the, uh, excuse me, whereas the agreement between the Village of Coal Spring and the Village, uh, and the Coal Spring, sorry, and the Coal Spring Police Benevolent Association expired on May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. And whereas the two parties have conducted and completed negotiations on a new agreement that will expire on May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees, the Village of Coal Spring, New York, that the memorandum of agreement entered into by the Village and the Village of Coal Spring Police Benevolent Association Incorporated dated May eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, covering the period, June first, two thousand and seventeen through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, is hereby approved.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Valotto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. Uh, next is a correspondence from Mayor James Smith. I've, uh, I won't read this. It's regarding a sidewalk repair. I have talked to a contractor who, uh, gave me a price today, but he included another, another piece of it, so we have to break it down. But, um, that's being taken care of, and I talked to Boggsy about it. So there's this one and there's also the one that Maureen had requested last year also. So this is the second time around because of the, uh, new hires and, and disarray in our highway department for a few years that these didn't get done. So, um, if we have a number for her, can we just give her a ring tomorrow, if you would?
Do we have, um, a date?
I don't have a date yet. No, I'm gonna, she's gonna do it by the end of the month.
Okay.
I told him how to get it out, so. Uh, next is a request to operate a food cart which we... Oh, yeah, they're with the phone, sorry. On which we heard, um, I think last week was it? A week and four?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? We don't have any information. Do we have discussion on this?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And we were going to follow up with, uh, John first?
Yes.
Which was done?
Which was done. So, um, I think it's a matter of, um, we, um, is there anything else from the work? Any questions or...
I'm still not clear on where it's, where, what's, where you want to locate it or where...
Well, my pri- the primary location, and I went down and examined it multiple times since the last meeting. Uh, Trustee Early mentioned that the, the down, the end of the street was a, was really designed as kind of a turnaround area. And I did, I did notice that that, where the corners where a car can physically turn around, it's, it's hard to get into, deep in there. So where the turnaround area is, is probably about twenty-five feet from the end of the actual road where a car is, can physically turn, uh, where the, where the things are. Um, so I was somewhere in that lower area or I think this gentleman mentioned he had a cart down there a couple of years ago or whenever he had it. There's also an area right there, a, a pretty large area. Um, I would say the area about here, same size of this room, uh, with a bluestone area just behind the wall. Um, and it, it looks like it's unused and it's, 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 uh, big enough for me, uh, the carts are not that big, big enough for me to manhandle it in there. Um, and it would be out of the way. It wouldn't be on the public street. And, and again, it's a, it's a zero footprint, so it's gone every night.
Which side of the tracks are we on?
We're on this side.
Yeah, I have to say that that's a no-go for me, that, that side. I mean, the, the turning radius is, and the turnaround is there. Uh, people, although it says no parking, are standing. They do pick people up there, um, in the summer especially, as soon as the hikers start coming, that, that is, there is a lot of traffic, that foot traffic down there. And they're all behind that bluestone area where you're talking about, which has, I believe, steps going up to it, would not be an easy access. Plus, it's really a high-volume area for pedestrians going into the, into the bathrooms there and hiking. It's like a starting point for everybody off the train, so...
Just so you know, they wouldn't let me go there. You're talking about the foot main street, right? By the restrooms, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't, your hair fillers wouldn't let me go there either.
And the trolley pod there stays up till, all summer.
So that's, that's, I mean, is a no-go. I think the other place is the other side of the tracks. Uh, there's a space, um, like, well, on the, on the, yeah, on Pedales when you come up on the other side of the, uh, tunnel. That's the only other place that I can think of unless you have another place in mind.
Actually, it has a couple of parking spots in it.
Mm-hmm. Um, well, I, that was my alter, the secondary was behind the, behind the track, right there on that other side. Um, I did have, uh, I thought about, you know where the park area is, where the, the Marina is, that road? I'm not sure of the name of the road, but, uh, there's a...
Yeah, that's West Street. We don't allow...
Nothing on West Street? Okay.
That's, that's in our code.
Right, okay. So that would be good. I mean, that's, it's an attempt, you know? It's just me, uh, it would be something that I'm trying, you know?
Will you be operating it or will you have someone else operating it?
No, me, just me exclusively. I, I might have a friend helping me because I'm a little bit, um, slow and my, my strength capacity is not that good.
I, I don't have a good recommendation for a location.
I don't either. I don't know.
I mean, I, I, again, I would just like you to reconsider that lower Main Street. There's a plenty of room there.
No.
There really is.
Absolutely no. I'm, I'm totally familiar with that.
Okay. I know you guys are. I know you are, I just...
I'm not...
Okay.
I mean, you could hardly turn around. On a weekend, if you go down there and try to, to even turn your car around or make an attempt to go there, you're, good luck. It's, it's a mess.
I saw, I, that's who, that's why I had the idea for the cart. Really tell you the truth. Um, again, it's self-contained, it's small, and it's gone every night. And I won't, you know, hours are an issue, I'll limit my hours to, you know, a short day.
What were the hours you, I know there were specific days and hours you had mentioned.
Yeah, it was Thursday through Sunday, and I'd like to be set up by eleven. Um, so I'd probably arrive ten, ten-thirty, set up by eleven, and then out by five.
So you'd be open eleven to five?
Yeah, Thursday through Sunday.
I, I haven't come up with a good spot.
How about your spot? Where were you, sir? Were you behind us?
I was on the other side of the tracks as you come up to, when you hit the tracks that walkway.
Yeah, there's a little dead, yeah, there's a little spot there.
I was right around, I was in that area there.
Um, what about down the road where the hikers park? Is that still considered Coal Spring?
Yes.
Where did the hikers park?
Mayor's Park.
You mean Mayor's Park?
Mayor's Park.
Mayor's Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was right, right by the River View, like, the next block up, the next block.
Yeah, yeah. I would prefer to be right down there, the other side of the tracks, if it's possible.
The tracks.
Actually, that might not be bad.
Yeah.
Um, we had, we would have to worry about the, um, gates going into Mayor's Park, as we found out with the situation last weekend. It couldn't block the gates.
If it was to the sunny corner of the, uh, the water treatment...
The sewer treatment plant. What about the other...
Between the parking lot and, uh, Mayor's Park?
The parking lot.
That decide, into the parking lot? And where Mayor's Park?
Uh, in, in front of wastewater, between, in front of wastewater or in, in front of Mayor's Park.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking more at the corner of the parking lot. Doesn't the parking lot, Mayor's Park come together?
No, the parking lot, next to the parking lot is the entrance to...
Okay, yeah.
But right before the park, there is a section there because we used to park there versus off well all the time.
Yeah, before the park, yeah. It's in front of the wastewater plant.
Right on, that'd be good.
It, it was a prime spot for consideration of additional parking areas, but, um...
Is everyone okay with that spot?
Yeah, I am.
I recuse myself from this decision. I'm gonna be personally impacted, so I'm not gonna vote.
Do you sell hot dogs?
No, but I do sell lemonade and a lot of other snack food. So we're kind of competing.
Okay.
I've got a brick and mortar on Main Street.
Okay.
Uh, why don't we, uh, are we, um, agreed for the location at the north end of the wastewater treatment plant?
I think that would be best, yeah.
Yeah. So, Jeff, you and I tomorrow morning can, uh, mark up a map and give it to him so that he knows the spot we're thinking about.
Okay.
Did you get any thought to, like, the Little League field on ninety? You're ready for, because during the summer, there's a lot of that, you have the Haldane field with soccer games and stuff like that. People walk across the street.
Do they have a concession at the, at the field?
Yeah, they do. They do.
That's a problem.
They do on weekends for the travel teams and all that?
I, I don't know about the travel teams, but...
I thought they, I thought they tore the concession down or did...
Oh, no, I don't think so.
No, no, they built, they just built it down.
I think the concession stand is only open during Haldane events.
Right, that's, that's my understanding, like, really football, lacrosse, soccer.
I'm not sure, really.
Don't know either. Yeah, it's sort of an awkward... Well, that's, that's up to Haldane, isn't it?
Actually, I, I don't think that that property is Haldane's. I think it's the...
You guys let the people park there during the winter, right?
Yeah. Well, it's not clear, you know, it's not clear if that state, um...
I don't know, just trying to find out.
Or where the, where the bound, where the line is. You know, the boundary line between the Little League field, the, sorry, the field, the girl football field on the top.
Don't know either. I have to say something to this.
On, on Fair Street is probably, because there are the trucks that are up farther and where the parking lot is, where, uh, so you would be before them, you would be catching the people coming, you know, just past it, catching the people who are walking from the village off the train.
Okay, yeah.
Catching the people who are parking and then walking to hike. So you would be the first stop before they get to the next cart that's up there.
Okay.
Next cart may not like you, but...
What days of the week were you talking about?
Thursday through Sunday.
Okay.
Jeff, do we have a, um, a food cart permit form?
Well, a vendor permit form, which I will...
Okay.
Only at the code, per code, it's, uh, the vendor fee is...
It's a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars per month.
Okay, that's reasonable.
So we will get a map to you and, uh, contact them tomorrow?
So will that include Fair Street and the other location?
Just the Fair Street.
Just Fair Street. We have to look into the other one. I'm not sure whose property that is.
I'll have to find out.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So you got a meeting to have? Okay, uh, next is approval of managed technologies for communication services, service equipment, and, uh, labor. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, this is with Anthony, um, versus what we had, we had previously okayed a contract with, was it IT?
ITC.
ITC. Um, we had some difficulty, um, communicating with them or them communicating with us.
Communications company?
Yep.
As time ran out, um, we got another estimate from Anthony with his last name.
Adama. Adama, Francis.
Excuse me, fellas. Thanks. Um, Anthony Adama, who does the rest of our tech services for us. Um, the bid came in lower by thousand dollars for that and the...
Thirteen hundred for the labor and equipment and then plus thirty-five, almost thirty-six dollars a month on the service.
And this is for, this is apples to apples, right?
Um, actually, this is better apples because Anthony's, Anthony's also including, the other one that did not include, um, was either highway or wastewater, and Anthony's does.
I mean, and Anthony's a known entity for us that we know and like and trust.
The other company definitely came recommended, so...
Yeah, it did.
But this is kind of, not just because it's a cheaper, because the services are lower in cost, but also because we know Anthony.
Yeah.
We're satisfied with his service. He had just, uh, finished doing some, uh, some security cameras, so vandals beware. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the Managed Technologies, uh, contract for equipment, labor, and service.
It'll second up.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Uh, next is authorize mayor to sign grant agreement for twenty-five hundred, the AED replacement, uh, made by the John T. Sloper Community Fund of the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley.
Yes.
I will, uh, read this thing to dear Francis. That must be you.
That's me.
Okay. Fran. Their request for, um, from the Community Foundations of Hudson Valley, uh, request via Village of Coal Spring for funding support of Village of Coal Spring Police Department AED replacement project was recently reviewed by our Board of Trustees. I'm pleased to report that a grant in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars is approved from the John T. Sloper Community, uh, Fund at the Community Foundation. Enclosed is a grant agreement. Please review, sign, and return copy. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. As indicated in the grant agreement, all recognition of this grant must indicate that it was made by the John T. Sloper, uh, Community Fund of the Community Foundation of Hudson Valley. I'll check on the amount of the grant will be issued upon receipt of a signed grant agreement. In addition, each grant must be followed up with a final report of completion of your grant online. Uh, we're very pleased to support your organization and this request. Please let me know if you have any questions. First of all, thank you very much. Uh, this is much appreciated and, and all funds are greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
Be the motion from someone other than I that...
I will make a motion, uh, to authorize Mayor Morandi to sign the grant agreement with the John T., uh, for the John T. Sloper Community Fund of the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley for the twenty-five hundred dollar AED replacement money.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Fran, nice work.
Yes, Fran.
Well, you know, this is the proof you and I that was, with the, two or three years ago with Matt Francis.
Yes, I saw the, yeah, who is the, nicely done.
Thank you.
Uh, next is a shared service agreement with New York State Department of Transportation. Let's see, I got this one here. Would you wanted to pull this out?
No, no, no. I want, because we do this every year and I have to pay for the file, but I didn't fill them up.
The difference is they share this one is the agreement's for four years, the shared services agreement.
Nice. So we don't have to do it every year.
So what is it again? Could you go over it a little, Jeff, or what is the, that's assigned to it?
Uh, it's with the state DOT. Basically, you know, if the guys are out there doing work or, you know, they find that they're, they need, you know, four-foot piece of PCV, that PCB now, something like that, they can call up to the, in, on Ludington Road, the, the local, the regional office, and ask if they have it, they'll send it down to us. And so it's, things like that, and plus disaster emergency relief, if they need help, you know, during a storm.
Does it include sharing equipment?
Yes, it does.
It does? Great.
Yeah, we entered it, I mean, we, I know we called them last year, there were a lot of questions we had. I think the last year was the first year we actually signed an agreement.
I think, I think I've seen two of them, two of us. But I do have copies of them.
And this also will enable, um, Main Street, we want the new lines painted, the yellow lines.
Yes.
To sign this agreement, uh, the state, so when they do ninety, they said they, you know, once we sign this, they will...
Oh, they will?
Yeah. The lines on Main Street for us.
Nice.
So do you need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the...
I guess the highway superintendent to sign, I guess.
Oh, okay. Uh, to authorize the highway superintendent, Robert Downey, to sign the shared services agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation.
I would gladly second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I know that Boggsy was asking about the lines on the insurance, so I'm glad we can have him do that. The line, our line, line, uh, new line machine that wouldn't do it, oh, be a little wiggly. Uh, approval of film application. Um, you want to go over this or who? Is this the one we were just talking about?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you...
Uh, this just came in today. It's, um, Ralph Lauren, who wants to do a photo shoot. They're gonna be sending out, sending up a scouting, um, an advance scout to pick out specific locations. It's for next Thursday, the thirty-first. They've agreed, they realize that's the fifteen hundred dollars would be the fee, plus a three hundred dollars, um, fee for us to execute that request, see if I can just last minute.
Nice, nice work, Lynn.
Um, plus police.
What's that?
And plus police at thirty-eight dollars an hour, police coverage. And not in formal, I said this just four o'clock, so I will...
And have we determined, are their trucks gonna take up the entire parking lot or do we know yet?
They have two motorhomes and two fourteen-foot trucks and six SUVs.
That's a lot.
We can also work something with the highway department parking back there.
Or they can contact, if they want, they could contact Loretto.
Yeah.
Well, we can try to, try to get that and see.
Yeah.
Add additional...
Well, it kind of looks, you know, on their application here, it looks like they plan to use the public...
That's what they put on here.
You know, if they plan to use it, we have to close it off the day before.
That's okay.
Right.
And they need to pay for the whole day.
To pay for that.
Yeah.
So that's a nice change.
Thirty-eight spots, every dollar, how many spots?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight spots.
Well, do you want to come up with a number? I mean, we don't have the charging, I mean, we should come up with that number. I mean, it's a Thursday, so...
What are their estimated hours of operation?
I thought, they did not include that on here, so I will, I will follow up with them in the morning.
They're saying an hour each location, and I see a whole bunch of locations.
Yeah, there's...
Three, four, five, seven. Yeah, I see eight different addresses.
Speaking from somebody who works on shoots like this, um, it's gonna be pretty much all day.
Yeah.
It'll be all day. And probably, you know, for photo shoots, still photo shoots, after ten hours, then they start having to pay double time. So it'll probably be either eight or ten hours at the most, so...
Okay, let's figure out what that cost is so we know, we can add that into the...
So thirty-eight spots, um, that's thirty-eight dollars an hour. If it's ten hours, it's three hundred and eighty dollars. Um, and they're probably gonna be there, yeah, I know. They're probably gonna be there from six or seven o'clock in the morning until seven PM to eight PM at night. Ask them, we're willing to close off the parking lot. It's gonna cost, for a fee, thirty-eight dollars an hour. Let us know when you want to close and when you're gonna vacate, and we'll give you that, that number.
Do you want to give them a break on these thirty-eight dollars to charge an hour? I know you don't. You want to charge them time and a half.
Come on, it's Ralph Lauren. You know how much it takes to buy a T-shirt from Matt Ralph Lauren?
We can talk about it tomorrow.
I think maybe we should charge them more than a dollar.
They have options if they want to talk to the church, you know, if they want to, you know, maybe the church should charge them a thousand for their parking lot.
For public information, the estimated budget for the location shoot is a hundred thousand dollars.
Or a drop in the bucket. Yeah, so, yeah. Four hundred dollars for parking lot isn't even, they might win a week.
So, um, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, this full permit as long as all of the required, uh, insurances are in place and...
They've already provided the insurance.
All right. I will second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a nice type of change.
Okay, we'll take it.
Oh, the bills are next? Um, I moved to, um, approve batch number forty-six twenty-eight for a total amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval of minutes, uh, workshop, uh, meeting, uh, May first, two thousand and eighteen, Village Board, sorry, workshop. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank Marie for, I think, believe, she's been in contact with Michael making some changes.
Well, Fran is also, I don't know, we enjoy you. Fran is also getting involved.
Thank you. But, uh, it's nice to have it done before the meeting. Uh, next is, uh, May eighth, two thousand and eighteen, trustee monthly meeting. I'll make a motion to accept or approve.
Second?
Lynn has it.
Lynn has the second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for making late adjustments, Michael.
You're welcome.
Okay, the, um, we have one other thing I, Fran and I just met with the rec. They do have, they have a request, um, or a recommendation for this goose, uh, scoop, hoop scooper, um, which will not alleviate all the problems at Mayor's Park, but if we are having a function or whatever. It's a tow behind, it's, uh, it, it's not motorized, um, so it, it runs with the, uh, the action of the mower, pulling it or whatever you pull it with, um, be a quad or a lawnmower.
Oxen, let's use oxen.
Oxen, yes, we can use oxen.
We can do that.
Or we can have people that have been convicted of, you know...
We absolutely got that suggestion, if you're willing. Talk to the judge.
Anyway, I'll pass this out. It's, uh, I think the total is, what is it, fifty-one?
Fifty-one and...
Hundred dollars.
You've got it.
Um, but I think there's a, a few issues with it. One, we don't know exactly how long it's gonna take, although we did try to calculate that, and I think it's gonna take someone to use it if we calculate right. Um, I think it would be almost a day, six to eight hours, I think, in there, right? Six hours?
Um, online hours because it takes them two and a half, but they have something like three times as big.
They have a sixty-one inch mower and it takes them an...
I'm always laughing.
Well, 'cause for, when we had our Oktoberfest, we'd had a bunch of guys down there, we'd have it up with buckets in it, it took a long time. I've done it. Takes a while.
Yeah.
There's more there than you want for free. Well, what happens, you go back, you start one day, go back the next, and it's...
Well, that's what we were just discussing. It's like, how often do you have to do this? It was like, it's, the thing they, the thing they're looking at is only twenty-eight inches wide, so, you know, it's not huge.
And then if you go up, it's another thousand to forty-eight.
Like fifteen hundred.
Does it have a funny name, this thing?
It's called the Tow and Collect.
Tow and Collect.
Town and Farm.
Farm implement that would fit on the tractors, the town tractor?
No, it is, no, it's a pull. It's a pull.
It's a pull behind and the wheels, the mower, the scoop.
Like a manure spreader.
Then, then collected and then...
I might get it for a trial, see if it works right.
It's from New Zealand.
So ask them if they have someone, uh, that has it in the United States.
Well, it's coming out of Georgia. It's actually, there's a, it's a big company in Georgia.
I'm sorry.
I didn't...
It's okay.
Yeah, the, the questions came up about, as you say, how often do you need it? Do we just do it before having an event? Um, is how, how they're gonna be able to do it, you know, before their games and, and all that, the whole discussion.
So, um, well, the thing, there's two things. One, they do have the money in the budget for, by the end of the year, but there's a couple of things that they were going to do that got delayed, so there are two things that would push it over their budget if they did those and not, you know, and this, or if we did this. Um, so, I don't know. I'm not totally sold on it because it's not gonna get rid of the geese. Um, but, uh, if you did have something and we are going to rent it out or before games, and if we, you know, we've, I've asked them for a contract with Halley, and if we see how much stuff costs, we could include that in part of the price, but defray it over the years and pay for it, I'm sure. It's really, I mean, we're letting people use the field and it's disgusting. Um, yeah.
So this, this can't make it into the, into the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget?
It can.
It can.
They would just have to late push a door, there's like two things that were a thousand dollars each.
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry.
We can get it delivered.
That's, that's it. The issue is.
Yeah, they can have delivered.
If we do it, if we approve it tonight, they will have it delivered by, before the end of the month.
I think it said two or three days.
See, I don't want so much money if that doesn't work.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, as you say, I don't, I don't know anybody who's actually has one and uses it.
The coyotes didn't work fake coyotes? The coyotes weren't rounded up yet.
Who would do this?
That was the question we asked. So we asked who was gonna, who was gonna do it, how long it was gonna take, and, you know, where we're gonna, yeah, where we're gonna find the manpower, because our guys aren't gonna have time to do this.
Could they do it while they're mowing, pull it behind tractor?
They said they could put it behind the zero turn, but then it's a combination of grass and.
Then it would take up the grass too. It would thatch the grass, so that you'd be dumping this thing.
And, and your mower is this big and, and the tow and.
It only, it only holds like maybe three wheelbarrows at the most, I think. The, uh, so that's not a lot if you're thatching.
Twenty, twenty-eight inches is not huge. It's, it's relatively small.
And it's narrower than our, our lawnmower, so you would have to make multiple passes.
Yeah, it almost sounds like it's, I mean, it's like, what, two feet? That's really tiny.
It is, that's, that's a big piece of property.
Do we know whether any of the equipment rental places around here rent something like this, so we could at least test and see if it works? If something like that.
The, the other question I asked is if we don't buy it and we get an outside company to clean that field for us, what would they charge us? Now, probably it would add up to five thousand dollars pretty quickly.
Yeah, I would think so.
Well, I was serious about the fake coyotes. The Department of Defense uses them on, on the installation I worked on. Barrington High School has these fat, black fake coyotes they put in the, in the school fields and the football fields and the ball, football fields. There's a couple of them, and I, you know, there, I've seen them multiple in lots of places, how effective they are.
We're gonna do that, I want pumoose and black bear.
I mean, a fake coyote is a lot cheaper than five thousand bucks.
But how do you, how do you keep them contained?
With fake, they're fake.
Oh, fake coyote?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, they stick them, a couple of them together in a couple little bunches and, uh, and the geese don't land.
I.
I mean, they're, they're legit.
I, maybe we should just put this off and let them do.
How effective?
They're pretty effective. The government's using them on where I work. There must be.
There's no one more effective than our government. The other thought I had, and I sent it to the, an email, was to somehow come up with, if we had some type of a dog park there that was controlled, not like a free-for-all, but that the village could use, but somehow have a board that would, would control it, you'd have a membership somehow. Uh, first of all, I don't know if it would be legal since it's a public park, but if it is, um, maybe that's a way. If there's dogs down there that are running and it's only certain hours, you only have so many dogs or whatever. I, I don't know how you would form the whole thing, but might be one way. We don't want to trade off dog crap all over the place.
There's gotta be, there's gotta be some.
Both groups.
Department in the state that can, that has encountered this problem and, and could make recommendations.
They have the sound systems, which sometimes work and don't other times.
Rex said they tried that.
They brought something down and tried that, and they tried firing blanks, I think, and Anthony Phillips.
All day long?
Anthony Phillips used to be down with his air gun.
So I don't know.
Be interesting to see how they're doing today with the maneuvers at West Point.
They were down there. They were there with the helicopter. They were at weekend.
No, that was our helicopter change.
I, I think we can put it off till next year. I mean, we have one more, but we do have a couple of things coming up. We have the, you know, two, two events.
Well, John Shear is, is responsible for.
He was, he was familiar with the situation.
He said he would take that on, then the next one is Oc- well, then there's Oktoberfest, and these guys know how to clean. They're very good at cleaning.
Yeah, we got a lot of help.
Yeah, I know, but it's an issue. Hopefully before October, we'll have it, um, we'll figure out something, but we need to do some research, I think. And I think, you know, I think this is a good thing, is I feel like we're just rushing into it because we have money and it's, you know, the.
Why, why does Dockside not have the same problem?
Because they have dogs.
But the dogs are primarily, well.
In the morning, yeah.
They're there all day. Some dogs, like maybe one, maybe two in the morning. There's a whole group of people that.
Yeah, in the morning, it's, it's just all dogs.
Yeah, so, but they're there all day. There's people that come with one or two dogs.
I got a dog you can leave.
But they're also in the. We can leave them down there. All right, so I'm feeling we should just hold on this.
Yeah, I think it's too much of a rush, and we don't, we're not sure what, we haven't got all, everything ready for.
And I think it's, I, I don't know if there is anyone that has one around. I asked Bruce something, a similar question, didn't get an answer.
It sounds cool, but it seems small for that area.
Yeah.
You know, if the thing was.
Yeah, when I'm thinking, I'm really thinking of twenty-eight inches.
Twenty-eight, that's a long, that's not much.
And for you to go, John Deere lawnmower.
It's a lot of passes, yeah. Three, that's almost four times bigger than that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'd have to have a dependable machine to do that with, which, you know, really.
You could pull that with one mower. Why have you pull it that fast? Tractor.
Yeah, well, they have it in the, in the, if you want to go look on, online, they have a, uh, a quad pulling it. And of course, they're doing it in no time because they're going thirty miles an hour or whatever. All right, so I'll get back to Bruce on our conversation. I'll see if we can, see if anyone has one, so we can do a test. And I think we should look into the research.
I'll, I'll check to see if New York State has any advice.
I bet you every golf course has it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think there's a real answer.
I've been playing on top of this, my whole life.
I think they were shooting the geese in the parks, and then they were trying to, they were giving them their shelters, but the people in the shelters didn't like the goose meat nor eating it. So they figured that it was bad and some other.
They were protected.
Was that?
I thought the Canada geese were protected.
Only in Canada.
Only in Canada.
Yeah, if they can make it to Canada, okay.
Anything from the audience, although everyone's been participating?
Where do I pick up the map or how, who do I see?
I will email it to you.
Okay, okay.
Next week, tentatively, we're scheduled, Wednesday, Bugsy and the Highway Department will be here moving furniture, clearing out, um, the clerk's office, Michelle's office, as we get carpeting and new flooring down. Um, we will most likely be closed to the public. Wednesday, Thursday for new carpeting, probably Friday to put stuff back. We will be without computers, Michelle and myself for the most part. So I will be, we will, once we have, uh, definite times, if they're coming in to put the carpeting down, I'll put something out on the.
On the website?
On the website and, and send out an email blast, but just let people know that's coming up next week, as well as taxes. Um, we'll be here tomorrow.
Did, generate the tax bills?
Yes, they're done. They'll be, Michelle's husband picked them up for us today. So we'll have that, that process, uh, we'll be beginning this week also.
And when do you mail them out?
They go out on the thirty-first for delivery on the first.
Great.
Anything else?
I don't, hell, no.
Motion to adjourn?
I will second that. All in favor?
Don't forget Memorial Day Monday.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, for consi- Mike, for consideration. I appreciate it.
Good luck with it.